Hey Erica, can you hear me alright?
I can hear you John, can you hear me?
Great, I can.
Hey Catherine. Thanks for filling in for Robin and I understand that if we're still going at seven, you gotta get over to Board of Ed.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll do what I can to keep this to a half an hour.
Yeah, I just figured I could continue off the recording.
Yeah, that's fine.
Erica, if you want, I'll just shut it down at seven.
That, you know, things happen.
It's like an act of God, you know?
Yeah, an act of Zoom. Troy, smile, you're on camera.
Is that too much light in the back?
Yes, could you fix that please? No, it's fine.
It's fine. I guess I can position myself a different way, I guess.
Then you really need to get something on that wall if we have to look at that wall. You need something over on that wall.
The TV is over there.
The wall next to it, needs some decoration.
This is just a temporary house, that's all.
Someone who still hasn't put anything on our kitchen wall since April. Catherine, is that a fish caught?
Uh, yeah, my fiancee.
Nice.
Got that, yeah, he's very proud.
The air does not like to stay on in here at night.
Okay, so Erica, I'll warn you again, I'm double screening it, so if there's something you need, just...
No problem, are you doing another meeting or?
Yep.
Oh boy.
Tonight is Scotland Board of Assessment Appeals.
Okay, oh, ours is the 14th.
Yeah, Mike's got that covered.
So, does he have Ashford tonight? Who runs their meeting?
Yeah, no, he's got Ashford Board of Selectmen and he's also covering an East Windsor Planning and Zoning Meeting.
Who runs the Ashford meeting?
Uh, we do. I mean, without the Board of Selectmen, they still haven't decided what they're going to do, as far as I know. Although, they're going into executive session right now, Mike is just texting me, so we might find out shortly.
Hmm, interesting. Exactly, who calls the meeting to order if neither of them are in charge? They're a hot mess there. Any of the towns that you work in, John, have they talked about in-person meetings yet?
Um, yeah, some have talked about it. And actually, we had, Mike and I both attended a special committee meeting in Hampton last week. It was their Affordable Housing Committee. They have like built a new pavilion in the, next to the town hall, so we met outside.
It'll get you through just for a little while, but...
Yeah, for a little while.
Nothing hides the dag of the day, isn't it? Hopefully all the kiddos had a good first day. You don't have anybody here as kids. Catherine, do you have children?
No.
No. Wonder how first days were. Are we recording now?
Uh, yes, it recorded immediately, I can pause it if you want.
Might as well.
Alright.
Alright, I will call to order...
We're recording.
Thank you. I'm gonna call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen, oh, special meeting. My agenda says special, but I thought this was a regular meeting because it was a planned meeting.
It should be regular.
I think it's regular, I think this is...
Yeah, because it's on our schedule.
It's on our schedule, we know, a holiday, so it's September 8th, 2020, at 6:30. Call to orders, the first item of business, the second item of business, we have three sets of minutes, two special meetings and a regular meeting. John, to your question this morning, the August 26th was filed with the town clerk, and Robin posted it today. But I believe the receiver record is incorrect, I believe it should have been marked August 27th, because the meeting was the night of the 26th. So, I have some questions about that. So, I'll start with making a motion to approve our regular minutes from August 19th, 2020.
August 18th.
I'm sorry, nobody said August 18th, 2020.
I'll second.
Motion to approve, seconded by John, discussion. Alright, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, motion carries unanimously. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of August 31st, 2020, special meeting.
I can't.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries unanimously. Again, we had a meeting on August 26th. They were received in by the town clerk, they are dated August 26th. That clearly is an error, so I would like to table these and ask that they be refiled with an accurate date.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of motion to table?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Alright, next item on our agenda is present to speak. If you are present to speak, we ask that you state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone on the call present to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear someone? Yeah.
Kitanaka.
Okay.
Mason Road. I've got two things I'd like to speak to. One is, I believe that at some point government's gonna have to determine that it itself is an essential business and open up, much like the other essential businesses. I understand that the governor has continued his monarchy until sometime in February and has subverted the democratic system, but I think at some point we need to open up the town hall to, as an essential business. Make government accessible again. The second thing I'd like to speak to is the letter that was sent to the Board of Selectmen regarding the library. I believe that we have more than mere suspicion, probably probable cause, to begin an investigation into what happened with the finances there. And I believe that we should be reporting this as soon as possible to legal investigatory services such as the state police. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? You will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak if you so choose. Next item is correspondence. You should have a list of correspondence in your packet. Any questions, the correspondence are all available in the Selectmen's office for viewing at any time. Like, seeing none, I'll move on to First Selectmen's Report. The fuel tank replacement at Public Works Garage, work began by Crop Environmental last week. They removed the tank and the new above-ground tank is set to be delivered in the install process beginning tomorrow. Is that still on track, Troy? Okay. And as of right now, we have a temporary fuel tank set up at Public Works so that we can provide fuel for not just our equipment or EMS, but because there were some delays due to COVID, we ran right up against school starting. So, our biggest concern was that buses be able to fuel here and not have to line up at area gas stations in order to fuel. So, we have a temporary tank set up there at the D W. The 2020...
Alright, thanks everybody.
John, can you mute yourself? The 2020 presidential election cycle, I received an email late, earlier this afternoon, that outlined additional funding for the 2020 election cycle from Secretary of State, specifically saying that Wellington is slated to receive PPE for poll workers. We actually received that, two boxes of PPE last week and an additional $5,434 to support increased costs due to COVID and the election. So, the Registrar's Office and the Town Clerk's Office are working on what their expected extra expenditures are so that we can see whether, how much of that $5,434 will go in covering those extra costs. And I have some clarification, there was also a grant, a Safe Polls Grant for each polling place in a town. We have just one, and that they would receive $1,000. So, I'm asking for clarification as to whether or not the $1,000 is on top of the $5,434 and if that's going directly to the Registrar's Office. So, that remains to be seen, to keep you posted. Also, with elections, the Registars have determined that moving the polling place from the town office building to Hall School Gymnasium is the best option for us, it will allow for better social distancing. It'll allow for one-way traffic that is handicap accessible, excuse me, to all of our voters, that will be one way in, one way out. So, to any voters who are unsure, you have the option of an absentee ballot for the normal reasons along with COVID, but there will be in-person voting for those who choose to vote in person. So, you need to choose a method, either absentee ballot or in-person voting. The Assistant Town Clerk position that will be available after October 2nd has been posted internally per our CBA. If it's not filled internally, then we'll go out and post externally two weeks, so keep you posted on that. And the Administrative Assistant position that was left empty with Robin's, changed to Town Clerk, has been posted and it will close on September 15th, and applications should be sent here to the Selectmen's Office. Public Works. Troy.
We're still doing some roadside mowing, we've patched holes around town. We actually paved the intersection by trask and the fire station down there, so hopefully that water problem will go away now. We've done some work over at the fire station for the school, they want to make a outside classroom there. We did that, and then we actually did some land clearing at Center School to make some outside classrooms over there. We did trash at the park again, tree removal is still going on around town, the dead oaks, we're slowly removing them. Tomorrow, we start chip sealing finally. The list will follow as Kuchko, St. Merit Circle, Lucerne, Adamec, Burtletham, Latham, Hall Hill and Timber. It should take them two days. Now, it's supposed to rain on Thursday, hopefully it doesn't, and then if not, they'll either finish Friday or Monday.
Is that the order that they're gonna go in?
That's the order.
Yep.
And the fuel tank, they're gonna set the tank tomorrow, and then hopefully within another week, we can have, we should have fuel if it's running, so.
Um, I will say that there's been a tremendous amount of work between our Public Works Department and the schools, working in cooperation. So, I really want to extend our appreciation to Troy and his staff for the tremendous work that they've done to support Wellington Public Schools in their efforts to create some outdoor learning spaces for students going back to school. So, if you happen to go by, did you do any work at Hall School, Troy?
No, nothing was gonna happen, so it was just Center, yep.
And so, down here at Center School, if you happen to go by the upper parking lot, you'll see a nice cleared area under the trees to the side of that parking lot. And his group worked really hard for the last week to make that happen. So, the ability for the town and the schools to work collectively and share services benefits all of our residents. So, thank them for that, and then the work he did was at Wellington Health Fire Department. So, thank you. I'm not looking forward to chip sealing, but I understand it's what we need to do for our rooms. So, I complain a little bit about chip sealing, that's why. So, people should move their cars as well, correct, Troy? I think where we see that the most is in the Lucerne and St. Merit's area. So, if your car is on the road, if anyone's watching this between now and the morning, and your car's on the road, move off the road. Otherwise, you can't promise, you know, don't get hit by stone and oil as they go through. Alright, anything else? Well, I was, John, on Public Works? Thank you, Troy, I appreciate it. Okay. The next item of business is response to community concerns regarding the library. At our last regular meeting, I spoke to a letter that had come to the Selectmen and the Chair of the Library Board regarding concerns at the library, and so I'm going to read a statement on that matter. Several citizens...
Hey Erica?
Yes.
I'm sorry, are we, did we skip the request to extend Public Works hours?
Yes. My apologies. Okay, so after your report, Troy, you had come to me with a request to extend before 10-hour days, which were set to end next Sunday? Or, I believe you were asking until November 1st, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be like October 30th would be the last day, and then that's a weekend, so then I think it's the second that would be, we'd go back on our regular Monday through Friday, 7 to 3:30.
So, to refresh your memory, folks, the summer hours for Public Works are set through the CBA we have in place, and those speak to, I think it's the second Sunday in May to the second Sunday in September. So, they work four, five, eight-hour days the rest of the year, and four 10-hour days in that timeframe. And it gives them longer time in the day to be able to get some of those big projects done that they need to do while it's daylight outside. So, Troy came to me, again, I believe we approved this last year, I'm not sure if we did it before that, offhand, asking if we would extend that for about another month and a half so that they could get some work done in addition to. So, Troy, can you kind of tell us what you have planned in that timeframe that you'd need the extra time for?
Well, I'd like to rent an excavator for the month of October, and there's some drainage issues that we didn't get to in the springtime, and I'd like to do them before the wintertime. So, there's a couple spots, and there's a couple waterways we can't get with our regular backhoe that we need the excavator. I know the Finance Board did say if you can rent one and prove to us, you know, it would be something maybe that we could think about purchasing, you know, for the following year. So, that's all. If I can prove to everybody that we can do work around town, and maybe we can actually purchase an excavator at some point to do these jobs.
I know at the beginning of the summer, you were able to get quite a bit of work done utilizing that machine, and we lucked out with really great weather. Obviously, some of these projects are weather-dependent, and so hopefully that would stay the same. This is an issue that is set by the union contract. Is your staff in favor of extending the 10-hour days?
Yeah, I spoke with everybody, and they said that, you know, they were in favor with it. If it didn't happen, then we'd go back to our regular days, and, you know, no one would be upset about it. It was, you know, we could work longer, we can, if not, then there's no issues either way.
So, their hours would really change, they're still 40 hours a week, it's just the timeframe in which they get those done. And when they're out there a little bit longer, they can get a little bit more done. So, as past practice, as a board, we've approved such an extension, which is longer. I told Troy, I'd bring it back to this board for us to determine. Once again, yes, John?
Um, just a question, we said a few minutes ago, it's supposed to rain on Thursday, so if it does, you'll finish the project on Friday. Does that mean paying overtime for Friday?
Actually, no, the company would actually provide traffic control for Friday, due to the fact that they were supposed to be here, you know, today, actually, in Star, and they didn't. It's been talked about, so they're basically, they have a list of roads, they have their traffic control, and it wouldn't affect us at all.
So, that's specifically for the chip sealing?
For the chip sealing, correct, yes. Yep.
But with the projects that Troy wants to do with renting a machine, if they're not done with it on a Thursday, then they finish up on Monday. They wouldn't come in on Friday, on any given Friday, and work.
Is there, and I probably should know this already, so I apologize if it's a silly question, but is there already like some sort of staggered hours so that there is like some amount of coverage on a Friday if things need to happen? Or, everybody works Monday through Thursday, and then everybody has a three-day weekend?
We have such a small crew that our Public Works, when they're in their summer hours, they all work Monday through Thursday. There is no one here on Friday at all. You know, one of the things we could do is, you know, the only real change we could make is if Troy's hours went so that he was here coverage on Friday and not, but then it leaves him, you know, a couple hours every day, you know, whereas Cruz here and he isn't, so that would be the only way to get coverage on Friday for that month. So, I think our residents are used to the typical summertime and Fridays, they're not there, and they'll leave messages. If there's something urgent, oftentimes people will call me, if they call Public Works, they'll call our office. If they don't get any answer, they do call here to the TOB. But this would just mean nobody in the department for another month and a half of Fridays. If we had a bigger crew, we could kind of split it, but our crew is so small. There's just four of them plus Troy Wednesday and Thursday, Monday and Tuesday, there's five of them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have much for, I'm getting back feedback, is that me?
It may be your new fancy.
Um, is everybody else, well, I don't know. Um, okay. I mean, I don't see necessarily a reason why it wouldn't be okay. I don't anticipate we're gonna have like tremendous amounts of snow, oh gosh, I should not say it, but like when the frozen precipitation will start, I don't know, and if that impacts everything, but, you know, it has happened that we've had October snowstorms, but I don't know, I mean, I, off the top of my head, I can't think of anything that would really make this a bad idea. And, you know, as soon as I say that, I feel like, you know, it's cursing every Friday to have like major storms, trees down and everything, so.
And I think we would treat that like we would any day the department is closed, if there were some sort of emergency, they would be called in, similar to the wintertime when it snows on a Saturday or Sunday, so.
But, you know, that's just to John's, you know, I think John's question of like, it just means we're increasing the number of opportunities that we're gonna be having to pay overtime, right? So, like, it increases that by, what, 50%? Right? Because if we have two days and it goes to three days of, you know, when we're getting into a little bit more of a higher-risk time, are we then putting ourselves in a position where it's more likely that we're gonna have some Fridays that we will need to call people in, and they've already worked their 40 hours? So, I don't know. I don't know that that's necessarily a big, huge concern for before October 31st, but it just starts, you just, you don't know.
You don't know. I would say, so, I think I'm gonna make a motion and then we'll see how this goes. I'm gonna move that we approved the extension of Public Works summer hours to November 1st with the understanding that if weather dictates, we make a change at any time. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, what I'm thinking is if we start to get weather reports, they're spending, or we could alter those hours. If suddenly, I hate to even say this, we start to, you know, becomes Colorado, or we think there's pending snowstorms coming, and we need to make change, and we can go back and revisit these summer hours. Troy would still have the machine and can still use the machine, he would just use it in a shorter day timeframe, as opposed to a longer extended day. I don't believe it would alter him being able to utilize the machine, it just, once they're out there, the longer they're able to be out, the more work they're able to be done, because a lot of time is taken away by packing up and bringing, driving all the equipment back to the garage. John, you look like you want to say something.
I'm, I'm not sure this motion is workable the way it is.
Would you like to offer an amendment?
Uh, well, let me, let me think this through here verbally. If we're going to extend the hours unless something happens, would that mean that we would have to hold another special meeting to change the hours? Because otherwise, I'm sure the union would, if we didn't do that, I'm sure the union would not want us to just change it on the...
Troy.
I think if there was something like, just say if we extended it and, you know, we had another tropical storm or something, and it was easier to do it, I think the guys would just say, okay, we'll go back to our regular hours. You know, if we do end up having snow in October, and it's gonna snow on a Friday, I mean, or whatever, then I think we could do something, and I could say, hey, guys, listen, we're gonna go back to our regular hours this week, and that's it. I don't think they'd have an issue, you know, with it, I really don't think that there would be a problem. It was just trying to get some more stuff done with the longer days, that's all, it wasn't, it's really not a big deal if we have to change the hours or anything like that. You know, the guys are all willing to do whatever they have to do.
Well, my concern, I would like to see is, I think we could do this, it's just I'm not comfortable with the codicil, which would allow, you know, we're gonna change hours, and I always get nervous with union contracts. I would offer an amendment, or make a motion that we amend the motion to strike the part about changing it if, if weather changes, as far as I'm concerned. It should be pretty safe to go through to the 1st of November.
We're gonna remember you said that, I'll accept that amendment. Alright, we're gonna remember that, see, I'm knocking on everything that has...
Please.
Did we have any... So, and I think we could come back to the table, if a storm, a tropical storm or hurricane were forecasted out, that typically gives us enough time, so.
Yeah, I'm just remembering...
They would, chances are, they would be working those overtime hours regardless of whether it was all in one day or a little bit every day. But, no, the amendment is simply to extend the summer hours of Public Works until Sunday, November 1st. Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Okay, I apologize again, we're gonna move back to new business, response to community concerns regarding the library. At our August 18th meeting, I mentioned the correspondence that you had all received, along with the Library Board of Directors Chairperson from some citizens concerned... along with the library board of directors, chairperson from some citizens concerned about activity at the library. So with that, I will make a statement. Several citizens have expressed concerns regarding allegations related to a former employee of the Wellington Public Library. While I appreciate the concerns of the citizens, the matter is currently being addressed internally by the Wellington Public Library and Library Board of Directors. At present, there is no role in that process for the Board of Selectmen. This individual was not an employee of the town of Wellington. Therefore, our board remains willing to assist the library where and when it would be appropriate to do so with its investigation. This is not a matter right for the discussion this evening. John or Liza?
Um, I think given information that I have based on our own legal, you know, the other legal advice that we've been receiving, I am in support of your statement.
John?
Uh, I'm still, uh, not comfortable with this. I think we need to ride herd on this and figure out a point where, quite frankly, I'm not sure that anything is being accomplished. I don't know. People are trying. I'm not sure they're getting anything done. So we do need to ride herd on this and ensure that something does in fact get done.
So there is a board, a library board of directors meeting that should be their regular meeting is the second Tuesday of the month. So that should be this Friday. I'm sorry, the second Friday of the month. It used to be Tuesdays. So I anticipate them meeting this Friday, September eleventh at six P M. Where any matter for the library board that is not a pending legal matter, I would assume they would speak and, and certainly your concerns could and should be heard at that board. And I would encourage that.
Well, is that addressed to?
That's addressed to us. That's addressed to any citizen that, that we, John, we've been advised that this is a matter for the board. We are, we are paying attention to it. We are aware of it. We are also aware that the library board is taking action. And so that right now it is a matter for the library board. The concerns about the former director, he was an employee of the library board and that's where right now the matter lies. And we are here to assist them if they, if they need us. Anything else? Moving along, item B, the pre-application for remediation of brownfields grant with the town of Ashford. This is the pre-application for a remediation brownfield grant. It's the next step in additional funding to follow up on the brownfields assessment grant that Wellington and Ashford received. So I would move to approve the submission of a twenty twenty brownfields remediation pre-application for Cattle Rock with the town of Ashford.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any questions?
This is the never ending project.
It is, but if we can get a grant to take care of the remediation, it takes additional costs off of the towns. The the land, as you all know, is in, in, in arrears with taxes. There are multiple leads on the property. So the work that can be done to clean up the property to hopefully be available to sell, for sale and reuse can only benefit both our community and Ashford to get it back, get any back taxes and to get back on the tax rolls. So I was, I am hopeful that there's another grant opportunity available. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. It brings us to our two tax refunds. Um, I move to refund Wendy and Robin Knight a certificate of correction in the amount of one thousand one hundred fifty nine dollars and eighty five cents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. I move to refund VW credit leasing LTD, a certificate of correction in the amount of one thousand forty eight dollars and seventy five cents.
Second.
Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Zoom from home is always entertaining. I'll take a pause in the action. A thumbs up if we had a good day at school. This camera shy now. Uh, we got a thumbs up. Good to hear. After six months, it's good. All right. So I'll move along to old business, a COVID nineteen update. Wellington, I did not see numbers out today, but as of yesterday, we still had sixteen cumulative cases in Wellington and zero probable cases. So again, I did not see any numbers come through today. So I believe that still to be correct. The, the town office is still operating by appointments, but we are going to go back to our regular hours. If you recall, we altered our Monday hours back towards the beginning of the pandemic. And at this point, beginning Monday, September twenty first, we're going to go back to our hours of twelve thirty to seven thirty to better serve our residents and allow greater access for those who need appointments after four P M. Everyone here is very excited to go back to nighttime. Um, and then I really want to address and I, I would like your input, Selectmen, in, as we navigate in-person meetings. So I think we've been able to effectively hold our meetings by Zoom. I think they're, that they have been well attended as of late. We've had fewer folks here. But as we near the six month mark, we need to further determine the best way to conduct our essential legal meetings, excuse me, of town boards and commissions. So I ask for your input. As you know, we do not have a meeting room equipped with technology to broadcast our meetings live from either the TOB or any other town facility. This, along with space to accommodate large boards and members of the public, makes that task difficult as we certainly have not just residents, but board members who would be concerned about social distancing. As we approach budget season specifically, we have at least one board with ten members. And when we're in any given room or on the table, we're elbow to elbow and that's a concern. So I see a need to hold more in person, but I also see the concern that we are not set up with that. And with that, we don't have the funding currently for those capabilities. So how do we do that in one room? Socially distanced and safe for, for everyone? I see the need for one of three options. Either we continue with full Zoom, we go to a hybrid model that allows for some in-person and then Zoom controlled, or we're all in person. And that all in person, in my mind, would mean we need some sort of technology available for folks to be able to attend our meetings. I think all those options come with some increased costs. We didn't budget to upgrade our technology capabilities or even the cost of Zoom meetings that right now are being hosted and run by C H A. And I'm thankful they're able to do that for us. But none of these were things that we imagined. Certainly I did not imagine would be in place long term when this began. So I, I'd like your thoughts on how we can get to in-person meetings. And I think a lot of small towns like us are in the same boat. You go into, you know, other towns and they have meeting rooms where they could broadcast. So someone could be, a couple of people, folks could be there and others could be live somewhere else. But your thoughts about it?
I mean, I, I, I don't imagine any immediate ability to go back to in-person meetings as they have been. So with us in that small conference room, I mean, we could do it. The three of us could do it, but we couldn't have anybody there. There's no way, or we could have three people, right, in the audience and, you know, we can't. And I don't think we have another facility that would sort of allow us the ability to hold meetings, even the Old Town Hall. Most of the time, would it be fine? Like, would, would we be able to space chairs out so that it could be socially distant? Probably.
Wouldn't get very many people downstairs. And on any given night, especially during budget season, we have multiple meetings going on at the same time. So, you know, sometimes they're cramped in a, the conference room or table outside the Selectmen's office or downstairs in the superintendent's conference room, which, you know, on a good day fits ten around the table completely without social distancing. With six feet apart, maybe you get two people in that room. So, you know, our options are pretty slim for in-person meetings. And without the ability to broadcast the three of us from here to somewhere else, where do we go with that?
Um, is there a reason why we can't? So, all right, so the, having another, like sort of a third party host our meetings. Is there a reason why we can't host our own meetings?
It's a, a matter of, um, and John may be able to answer this for us. With, we, we currently, we, we have a Zoom, so I can tell you that I have a free Zoom account. We don't pay for an account. And I'm not sure how many meetings you can run at the same time on any one platform, one. Okay. So you can run one meeting on a platform at a time. So with C H A hosting our meetings, if they're using their Zoom for another town, then we get a go-to meeting. That's why sometimes you see us go back and forth between platforms. They have the ability to, to allow for, with the account, they have the business account, they have to allow for a larger, a larger audience than the free hosting. The free hosting would have to be everyone have access to Zoom, one Zoom password and username and setting up their meetings and running their meetings. But again, we can only get one at a time. So even during budget season, I see lots of problems with that. Although Phil typically does the Board of Ed meetings himself where some of our other board and commission members are using C H A and some just haven't met. So, you know, I think there are ways around it. We, in order to, us to host them, I, I believe with our YouTube account, we should, I, I believe we can live stream so we could host a meeting and then it'd be broadcast live stream. Anyone who wanted to comment would have to do that by email. They wouldn't have access to the meeting at that point or similarly by comment. Um, it gets a little bit trickier, but I think we need to start to plan for how all of these larger meetings are going to take place. And if we feel like that we've been successful with them, we can continue this model for another time going forward. We could purchase our own full Zoom account and/or go-to meeting. It's having someone to administer that on every given board.
To be honest, I think, I mean, that's what I'm suggesting, right? Like that we purchase our own and you know, for Board of Selectmen, we have, so these meetings are being recorded. They're being video recorded. They have been, I, I believe I saw Robin anyway, was still audio recording the meetings and was taking notes.
She does, yes.
Okay. So there, so we had like the triplicate, you know, there was redundancy built into the system for note taking, right? So if we were in a situation where we purchased our own Zoom and the recording secretary was also tasked with, you know, we're recording this meeting via Zoom. The recording secretary was taking notes and also keeping an eye on the chat or managing the auto, like the mute, unmute feature for present to speak times. Like I, I feel like that is manageable. I mean, I've hosted meetings myself.
Right. So we can put that on the recording secretary to go ahead and run that feature of the meeting is what you're saying?
Yes. It's so like, I mean, is that free? No, because we still have to purchase, we still have to purchase the licenses for, or however many accounts that we would need for Zoom. You know, you can have a Zoom for the Board of Selectmen. There can be a Zoom specifically for Board of Finance. You know, they can purchase their own Zoom. It doesn't need to be, you know, one Zoom for the entire town, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, um, I, I, is, is that more cost effective than what we're doing now? I don't know. So. But I think, I think this format is the, the simplest, most efficient for the circumstance that we're in right now. I don't know how we would change it in a way that would make it easier for anybody.
Or safer. And that's, you know, safety becomes my concern. I know that we have many board members on, on multiple boards and, and residents who are still concerned about coming, would not come out to in-person activities and, and want access to our meetings in this manner. And as the governor's emergency declaration has been extended to February ninth, some of the E O's will, are set to expire now in November. Based on just this evening, the latest E O that I saw, and I still have to really read through it to understand it. That, you know, some of those things might change. It's just, it's making sure that if all board members can't be in the same place, how can we effectively hold a meeting, an in-person meeting? And still allow them. John, do you, can I ask your thoughts? I'm sorry, John, C H A, John?
Yes.
Um, on the account. So you're saying you can only have any given account, even a paid account? You can only have one? Can you mute test us? It's okay. You can still only hold one meeting at a time.
That's right.
Need account.
Uh, that's right. I, I can tell you that, that a town, the town of Essex, which is of similar size to, to Wellington, decided to go with basically two floating Zoom accounts that the, the administrative assistants to the Selectmen basically have basically like a sign out calendar for, as if they were meeting rooms. And different boards or, or commissions basically sign out one of those Zoom accounts when they want to have their meeting. And the administrators basically share the login information with the, with the chairman or whoever is administering each commission. And thus far, it seems to have worked pretty well with those two.
That's good to know.
But in the, again, in the interim, Mike and I, through C H A, we have, we each have a Zoom account. We have a, a go-to meeting account, which is sort of, it's a third meeting that we could run. And there are a couple of other Zoom accounts available to us through some of our colleagues if, if things get super, super, super busy. But, you know, we're, we're able to help out with at least, at least three meetings as needed. But again, there's other towns we're working with too, but.
And I appreciate that. And I think you and Mike have been tremendous support in getting our meetings up and going and monitoring them and, and hosting them, running them for us. Specifically, we had the special meeting this board held after the incident on Myrtle Road. And that was, you know, a tremendous undertaking to monitor that group. And I have absolutely no complaints about the work that has been done by C H A. I'm just starting to think long-term and spending as we now are in month six of COVID and the, under the public health emergency and these executive orders. And so with this, some of these items potentially going into the wintertime as we start to hear concerns of another wave of this into fall and winter, what that would mean for us. And, you know, I know budget season will be here before we know it and wanting to think. And wanting to think ahead, because often we have multiple meetings that are necessary to have planning, zoning and still meeting. John, go ahead.
Question for John, a couple of questions for John. How much does a Zoom account cost?
That's a, that's a good question. It depends on the level. I can, I, well, I mean, I'd have to basically go and check our, what our finance people are paying. You can Google it as easy as I can, I think, unfortunately. But it's, it's around 15 bucks a month per license, maybe a little bit more if you get to higher capacity. I think the 15 bucks a month, again, give or take, gets you about 100, 100-person meeting. And then if you, as you increase the capacity levels, the monthly subscription increases.
Okay, because I really want to go back to in-person meetings, but we're not anywhere near the point where we're ready to do that. That's going to be another few months, I think. And if it's, that's not a bad price. I mean, I think we could very easily afford.
Yeah, and I agree, we need a couple. So I'm hopeful that in a town like Essex too is working for us. I'm thinking come January, February and into beginning of March, two is not enough. Our Board of Finance, Board of Ed, Board of Finance and CIP alone could, you know, at any given time have multiple meetings. We meet, you know, multiple times and that's just, that's not even the regular business. So we'd need to think about some additional things if we get to that point and see what that looks like. But I'm hopeful that a town like Essex is making it work with two purchased accounts.
Just to clarify, I'm sorry, Liza, just to clarify.
I just had the Zoom pricing up.
Okay, yeah, I did too. Go ahead. It's, yeah, it's 200 bucks a year, basically, for the, for the, and I think it's a year subscription, it's not monthly. And so you'd probably want that, that level. Because that's unlimited numbers, up to 300 participants, cloud recording transcripts, all that sort of thing. So it's, that's probably the level you'd want is 200 bucks a year.
So do I understand 200 dollars a year for one account? And then we could have as many accounts as we wanted?
No.
You could, that would allow you to run two simultaneous meetings. But you could run as many meetings as you want throughout the year. Only two could run at the same time.
Oh, you can run two at the same time? I'm sorry, I thought you said you could only run one at the same time.
No, I'm sorry, if you were to get two accounts, if you were to get two accounts like Essex.
200 dollars per year per account.
200 dollars per year per, so we could have two accounts for 400.
400 dollars gets us two meetings on any given night.
Right. And, and this would be a subscription. It's not something we could pick up today and drop tomorrow.
Today, drop a year from today.
You could drop it tomorrow, it's a paid one for a year, yeah.
You could, you could sell your prescription, your subscription to somebody else and give them your password, I suppose.
I will tell you one of the nice benefits of it. The library board has a purchased account. And that allowed for their meetings are, in the same way with John and Mike when they do our meetings, they are posted on a Zoom cloud. So if something were to happen to the meeting, I will say, for instance, the library was having trouble locating a meeting once it converted. And Zoom was able to help them because they have that paid account. It actually is on the cloud. The free account is not, it's simply saved on the computer in which the meeting takes place and is recording. So that added level of security is helpful and gives you some reassurance that your meeting is in fact still somewhere and easier to find. Because that's important, one of the caveats is that we have to record them and then post them. So, and I think our residents have begun to like that. I've heard many compliments on the fact that people can see all of our meetings in a pretty timely fashion online and they're accessible. So I'd like to us to try to find a way to continue that even after COVID. But that's going to involve a little bit of an investment and it's, you know, 2020, it's time for us to come into that work where we make our meetings more available to folks. And we recognize that as long as we're still under this health emergency, we're going to have residents who are going to need access to our meetings beyond the in-person portion. So, you know, I can look to purchase accounts and we can start to use the Zoom account similar to a meeting room and work in that manner. If we needed more, we could still potentially utilize the services of CHA. Again, they come at a cost to us, which they've offered to multiple towns that have taken them up on that hosting capability. So just, you know, kind of wanted your thoughts. Look, I'd love for us to get back to in-person meetings. Just don't think we're quite here that, there yet. And we have, again, a significant group that, folks that would be leery to come out in person to a meeting and we don't want to cut off access to our meetings. Since we had this discussion, I will tell you that the new numbers just came up in an email from Eastern Highland. Our number went from 16 to 17. So we now 17. So we've had a new case in the last couple of days. So still relatively small number. We're very fortunate here in Wellington. And I think we're all doing our part to help keep each other and our families safe, so.
So, so I may suggest, since we're obviously going to be continuing Zoom meetings for a while, we need to purchase two accounts, which would get us through next year. Hopefully, we won't be doing them for the next year, but then we would have the accounts to keep us going as long as we had to. Something else we should be thinking of is looking into what we're going to do after we go back to in-person accounts as far as video recording our meetings and so.
Yes.
Which takes us back to the very first conversation we ever had as this particular Board of Three.
Advocating for proper funding of.
Yeah, like recording and disseminating our meetings more consistently. So there, there is, the Zoom is a month, does also offer monthly plans. So it's, it's 15 dollars a month for small or 20 dollars a month for the big Zoom. So you can either buy it for a year's license and you basically get two months free, or you can go month to month if we think we're only going to be doing this for two more months, which is doubtful. Yeah, so I think buying a couple of, two or three annual licenses for Zoom probably makes the most sense.
It does. I just, I want to, at the same time, do a little bit of investigating because if we're asking those that are running meetings, so like our recording secretaries or any of our board and commission members, they are not town staff. They do not have town issued devices. And so I want to make sure there's no concern of them hosting these meetings on their own computer that would open them up to any concerns within their, using their personal device. That's always a concern for some folks. So I'll just double check that. When I do a meeting with Zoom, I use either here in the town hall or the town issued tablet that I have. So, you know, we're asking people to do those on their personal devices. But I believe, again, that the hosting is a cloud hosting through Zoom. So it should not necessarily be saving it to their personal devices. But I want to recognize that that could be a concern for folks. And we just don't have town issued devices to hand out to every recording secretary. And by not many, I mean none. So I'll look into those and we'll proceed from here. But I really want us to be able to talk about it. I want to find a way to get into that. We're going to need to talk, you know, I'm looking at different avenues for hosting town meetings if need be. If something came up and we needed to host a town meeting, we have to be able to do that. The problem with town meetings is you have to be in the room in order to vote. So having it simply by Zoom doesn't necessarily, I'm not sure that allows for that. So we've got some work to do there. But as this goes further, we need to be able to get back to as much normal business as we can. So it's a challenge for not just us, but for many others. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding COVID? Well, okay. That brings us to present to speak. If anyone is still on the line, it would like to speak. I ask that you identify yourself for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak?
Pete Tanaka, Mason Road. I'd like to say first that I'm real happy to hear that the town hall is going back to normal hours and that there is some conversation about going back to in-person meetings. Secondly, the COVID numbers, those are cumulative COVID numbers. And being cumulative, I'm assuming that at some point, people get either better or not better. And so I think a far more relevant number to be giving us would be current numbers. Somebody must have gotten better by this point. So I'm guessing that we don't have 17 active cases in town right now. That, that's the, that would be the relevance of that. And then I'd just like to express my disappointment in the board avoiding their fiduciary responsibility to the town regarding the library. And I believe that a criminal investigation should be started as soon as possible. And as part of that, a, a, an accountant would, would take a look at the books. And I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? I don't often speak to the present to speak comments, but I will mention that I have mentioned that those numbers that I provide you are the numbers that are provided to this office and they are cumulative. So we've had 16 for many weeks now. So my understanding is that those folks have, folks have gotten better to some extent. I don't have any information on the individuals who tested positive. That is not shared with this office. So my safe assumption is because we have been fortunate that we have not lost any residents due to COVID-related illness, that the majority of them probably are on the mend. So over the course of time, we have had 17 cases. We have had 16 for several weeks. So sometime in the last couple of days, we had at least one positive because the number went to 17. So I hope that's clear. If I haven't stated that clearly, for anyone, please let me know. And over the.
I just think the question was. I'm sorry.
But I don't get numbers. Sorry. Done the Zoom.
Yeah, I think what Peter's asking for is cumulative cases versus active cases, right? And what you're saying is you don't get that breakdown? I wonder if we can just ask EHHD if they do have that breakdown in any way. Some, I mean, I know we're tracking it at the state level. So some way it has to be broken down. But with so few cases in our area, they might not be like tracking it to the same extent. I mean, I know the UConn dashboard for positive cases on campus similarly has the cumulative number of cases, but then also the active number of cases. So cumulative is 100, but active is like 15. You know what I mean? So it might just be worth asking whether or not we can get that information from EHHD.
I will ask, I know at some point, if they weren't tested again, then they don't know if they're active. A UConn is testing their students. So because they're tested, they know they're active, they're tested again, and now they're negative. They know that they're no longer active. I don't believe we have that same method because I can tell you that not everyone is going back for tests, but I'll ask. So I don't think we have any current hospitalized because we've only had one cumulative hospitalization and that was a long time ago. And so I don't know to what extent. But I'll ask if they can give us a difference between active cases, current active cases.
It's being collected at the state level. So again, that doesn't mean that they're, they're able to break it down to town level. But it is being collected at the state level. So it's just worth the question.
All right. Seeing no one else present to speak.
I could clarify. The reason I'm asking is because if we go with 17 cumulative and it's my understanding that this runs its course in about two weeks, we're probably at one active case in town. So, you know, that's, that's a far less scary number than 17. Just, you know, as a point of order. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to good and welfare. I'm going to again mention that our polling place for the November 3rd election will be Hall School Gym, not the town office building. So in-person voting will be at the Hall School Gym. There will be information shared on our website, on our social media and in the form of a postcard going out to all registered voters in town from the elections department. But we can't say it enough so folks know where to vote here in Wellington. It's important that we make every effort for you to know how to exercise your right to vote. I want to mention that today was the first day of in-person classes for Wellington Public Schools. And the first time they are together as students and teachers and groups since March 13th. I know there's, I'm sure lots of apprehension with teachers, with staff members, with parents. And I applaud them all for the difficult decisions they've had to make for themselves. But we want to wish all of the students, whether they're in-person or distance learning, teachers, staff, custodians, paraprofessionals, food service staff, our bus drivers and administrators, a safe and productive new school year. And I hope that you're able to all get back to class safely soon. Anything else for good and welfare? Either this election.
Just an extra special thanks to all the work of the Board of Education and Superintendent's Office. This, I'm sure, I mean, it's been no small feat, so.
I can tell you, the superintendent has been here hours and hours and hours and hours.
I do not doubt. And I saw him out there this morning waving in every student when I was driving by Hall School this morning. So I'm sure he was doing the same thing at Center, even though I didn't drive by that at that time.
That's where I saw him.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, no small task for him and his staff at all. And for every student who had to don that mask and wear them all day. And, you know, it's a different experience for those kindergartners heading into public school for the first time. But they will, they will do it because we are Wellington strong. I will mention, I did receive an email yesterday. Unfortunately, along with many other events in and around Wellington, the car, annual car show held on the Green this October has been canceled. So hopefully they'll be able to make a bigger and better car show next year. So that really leaves us with no large events. But I think the safety of those putting the event together and anyone attending is at the forefront of their decisions. So I'm sad to hear it. I understand that, you know, it's not always possible. With that, I want to thank Catherine, who was here, had to go to do the Board of Ed meeting. And she's going to handle our minutes for this meeting with Robin's absence. And she'll get the notes of the remainder of the recording. So thank her for pulling double duty tonight. And John, thank you for hosting our meeting again. With that, I will move to adjourn at 7:32.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Have a good night.